So the time is 6:01. Your Finance Committee and Council as a whole is back in session. Stacy, Clerk, if you could please take the roll call?
Certainly. We have Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman at Large Gary Donovan, present.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor. I know she's here. I think she's not off of mute. We're going to say she's here. And Councilwoman Bridget Hosky.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky, First District, present.
Councilman William X. Conlin.
Councilman William X. Conlin, Second District, present.
Councilwoman Elizabeth Johnston.
First District, present.
Councilman Mitchell Galagnano.
Councilman Mitchell Galagnano, Fourth District, present.
Councilwoman Robin Hamilton.
Councilwoman Robin Hamilton, Fifth District, present.
Councilman Peter Massaro.
Councilman Peter Massaro, Sixth District, is here.
Councilwoman Trenae McGee.
I'm Trenae McGee, Seventh District, present.
Councilwoman Crystal Finelli.
Councilwoman Crystal Finelli, Eighth District, present.
Councilman Robert Bruno.
District, present.
Councilman Barry Lee Cohen.
Councilman Barry Lee Cohen, Tenth District, present.
And Chairman Ron Quagliani.
Chairman Ron Quagliani, Council at Large, present.
Okay, we have a full house.
Excuse me, Stacy, I am here. I'm sorry, I was...
I got your call.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so generally, we do have Superintendent of Schools Neil Cavallaro, present, and Kebby Waterfield, the Chairman of the Board of Ed. Normally, what we do is you guys present the budget and tell us anything that you may want to discuss with us. And then we will roundtable of questions. Everybody will stay muted until they are recognized by the Chair. And then I'll call on you by name to ask you questions. What we have been doing, we're going to do again tonight, is do a two-question limit so that all the council members can have a chance. And then we will come back around for a second time if you still have any questions that you want to ask. But at this point, Neil or Kebby, if you'd like to start us off, that would be great.
Sure, I think I unmuted my mic. Can you all hear me? Yes, okay. Matt Cavallaro is also here, our Finance Director. And I try to give you a brief overview of this year's budget. As you know, you guys recently approved the five-year plan that the Mayor submitted to MARB. Our budget is in line with that. The budget calls for no increase over the five-year period. However, we do anticipate an increase of about $1.6 million from the state of Connecticut as a result of being an Alliance District. That was part of, you know, working with the city and, you know, understanding what we could live with, given that we are going to receive a good amount of money from the state of Connecticut. Again, for those of you that aren't familiar, West Haven is one of the 33 Alliance School Districts, which are the neediest school districts in the state. We have, and I feel like we've worked pretty closely with the administration to prioritize our needs. You know, one of the things that I'd like to point out is that I believe that we have negotiated and are in the process of negotiating very responsible contracts with our bargaining groups. We've moved all of our employees over to a high deductible health plan. That's happened over a couple of years. We've actually negotiated that for a second time with some of our unions. We've been able to save some pretty good money by doing so. And our benefits seem to trend in a positive direction. We have investigated, as the city has done, with the, the city has actually moved over to the State Partnership Plan. We have done so, but we continue to do so. But because we're doing well and we're already in the high deductible plan, we haven't seen the savings. You know, one of the concerns that I can't seem to get an answer from, from MARB, is if we do move over to the State Partnership Plan, who would pay the current plan off with Anthem? I know that's still a consideration with MARB, with the city. Until I get a firm answer, it's not even a consideration, but we do want to be able to offer our employees very good benefits at the best cost. And right now, we feel we're in a good plan, but, you know, benefits are always a consideration when you do the budget, whether it's the city or the Board of Ed. One of the highlights of our budget this year is that we actually started last year with implementing a one-on-one computer program. We started in grades three and implemented grades three through eight. Next year, we'll be implementing a plan that will give all of our high school students in classrooms computer access with one-on-one devices. We have not allowed kids to take them home. And that's been a question that's come up in our school district because frankly, they're leased computers. They're programs for our network, and we just don't have the insurance nor the means to provide everyone at this time. Again, being an Alliance District, as I mentioned earlier, we are in the process and have taken advantage of an additional 1,600 computers from the state of Connecticut to address equity issues amongst poor communities like West Haven. So that will help us. You know, I like to say that we are going to be in a better position if, and it may happen, next fall, we are suddenly out of school. We should have devices and we'll be in a better position to allow certain kids to take them home. We've also received, on that note, I know I'm getting off the subject a little bit, but I think it's important, given the situation that we're in, as well as, you know, as well as finances, that to talk about this a little bit, and I know that, you know, funds are always important. So why, you know, we have to discuss whether or not we can let kids take home computers. As I said, the ones we have now, or at least, we've received a $50,000 donation to buy some computers through Yale University that was spearheaded by State Representative Borer. We have also, we're also working with the Rotary Club who's purchasing some. So, you know, if, you know, and again, the, in I would say likely event that we are out of school next fall, we will make sure that all of our kids have access to, or will do the best we can to make sure all of our kids have access to internet and computers. Let's see. We, you know, we're pretty pleased with our distance learning program, considering, you know, six weeks ago. I don't think anyone in the state of Connecticut even knew what it was. We've done a good job of reaching out to our teachers, with, through our teachers, to all of the students, even the kids that don't have access to a computer. You know, we're making packets, we're delivering things to homes, we're mailing things out, and our staff has done a really good job, considering, you know, that we were given about a week's notice to put entire program together. On that note, you know, one of the things that we are going to start is negotiations with our teachers. Now, for those of you that aren't aware, we negotiate teachers' contracts a year in advance. And, you know, frankly, and I've told this to our board members, who are very well aware of this. I've mentioned this to past council members. I know the Mayor is aware of this, is that while it's nice to negotiate freezes and no step movements and lesser benefits, it makes us less competitive when we have to go out and find high-quality instructors, which I think we have a really good teaching staff, but to maintain that high level is going to be difficult. So it's something that we're aware of going into negotiations, and I think it's something the city should be aware of. You know, it's, you know, there are shortage areas which are designated through the state of Connecticut, science, math teachers, tech ed, believe it or not, special ed, you know, all areas of concerns. And by the way, areas that can cost you some money if we can't find the quality teachers. You know, that would be a shame for kids mostly, but, you know, as the city as a whole. So it's something that, you know, we need to keep in mind, that zeros and freezes and things are nice, but, you know, with a limited number of math teachers out there, we need to be able to be somewhat competitive. I think it's important that I mention to you that, you know, over the last few months, and I hope the Mayor will concur, that we've worked closely with the city and with MARB to try to develop efficiency plans. We are, we have outsourced our health benefits, and I believe that that's a service that we are going to try. And if it works out, the city will be expanding. We are going to look at, and I think before the Council, is a proposal that the city is putting forward with regards to paychecks and ADP. We are planning on hiring. We had a couple of vacancies. One of the people that will oversee that person, and again, try to combine services and become more efficient. We, you know, I think it's a great thing that the Mayor has included in her budget this year, a risk manager, which, a full-time risk manager, which is a position that has been vacant for years. And I think will serve the city really well. And, you know, over time, will save us money and make us do things better. So we continue to work, you know, work with the city, do the things that we need to do to, again, get us out of the hole that we're in and become more efficient. We, you know, we understand, by the way, that when you start these initiatives, initially, they cost a little bit of money. But over the long haul, you know, being able to operate with better technologies and better-trained people and even doing some outsourcing, as long as you do it in a manner that doesn't hurt your current employees, is a good thing. It takes a lot of things that the city doesn't manage very well and hasn't managed well historically off our backs. And I believe that's happening. We don't, you know, don't anticipate anybody losing a job over our overall plan. And again, I don't want to speak for the Mayor, but I think I can. You know, we've looked and taken advantage of vacant positions in order to do that. You know, we're in the process now of, we're in the process now of looking at our five-year capital plan. And I think we're finally starting to see some progress with that. As Councilwoman Hosky knows, we're moving forward with, you know, looking at, you know, planning a new Washington school, which I think is sorely needed in a part of town where kids, again, face a lot of equity issues. And I think that's important. We are, we've started a lot of projects. You know, the high school is going well. I know something that has always been, the Council brings up year after year. The Mayor is in the process, and I'm very involved, along with Ken Carney. We're reviewing several solar projects, which we think are going to save us a lot of money. Well, we're going to include one at the high school. And we're going to put one, we're going to, we're looking at Carrigan. We're looking at Bailey, where there'll be a new, once a new roof is installed. And we're also looking at Malloy School, which is our maintenance, we serve as our maintenance building. And we run a lot of preschool programs through the community house there. Just, it's a, it's a good roof that will be able to sell energy back to the electric company. So I think those are all nice projects. I still think that, you know, as much progress as we made, we need a more comprehensive plan. Again, you know, we did our due diligence this year and I think provided the city with a very comprehensive plan. And it needs to be addressed. And a perfect example of that, and again, I know there was some, you know, some talk about it, was the cafeteria, the roof over the cafeteria at Brexit Bailey. Well, yeah, it's got to be fixed, and the city owns the buildings, and you're not going to have a hole in the roof. The difference is, is that if you plan accordingly and you know that a roof is 25 years old or 30 years old, West Haven submits to the state for a new project, like we're doing at Bailey now, and it's going to cost us 25 cents on a dollar to put in a new roof. So those are the things that, long run, if you plan accordingly, will save you money. And frankly, and again, I understand the financial constraints that not only the city deals with, but the board as well. You know, you still gotta, even though you got to figure out how to pay the bills today, you need to plan for tomorrow. And I think that that's something that, you know, we've started, but we, and again, I commend the Mayor for that and even the Council for their support, but it's something that we need to do a better job with down the road. You know, we are, as you all know, we're closed and we're going to be closed until May 20th. At least May 20th. I don't know what happens between May 20th and the rest of the school year. This could be an opportunity, you know, not one we welcome to look forward to, but, you know, we do think there are some opportunities to save some money this year in our budget and turn some money back over to the city. The potential for savings in things like transportation, overtime, substitutes, waste disposal, utilities, school resource officers, security guards, you know, overtime, which typically at the end of the school year, when you have most of your school events, that's when mostly overtime occurs. There are going to be some costs for the shutdown, like preparing for distance learning. But overall, we feel like there's going to be a savings. For those of you that have been around for a while, know that, you know, past superintendents like to spend every dime they can and make sure they don't turn anything back over to the city. That's never been my style. I think, again, give it, and I know it's going to come up, the audit issues, that there is going to be the opportunity to make good on some of that. In fact, for those of you who don't know, we've turned over since 2013 about $2.5 million to the city. We were entitled to use some of it, but never have. And again, this year, I think the number could be substantial, although, don't ask me today what it would be, because, again, I just feel like there are a lot of things that need to, we have to overcome with the shutdown and what may happen even in the course of the summer and summer school and extra hours of instruction. You know, I'm not sure yet, so don't pin me to that. You know, we've lost some revenue, as I mentioned, you know. Again, there was a cost of the distance learning shutdown. We probably lost a lot of revenue with the Bennett Rink this year, which has been self-sustaining. We weren't, we weren't able to host the hockey tournaments that we were. However, the flip side of it is that we took the ice up about a month and a half early, so it could offset. So again, those are the kinds of things we're looking at. We have, we're actually bringing in, for those of you who don't know, Aces Area Cooperative Educational Services. They're our RESC. We're actually bringing in some finance people to help us look at those kinds of costs and help us close our books next year and kind of better plan for next year. They're actually coming in on Monday, and I think that's a good thing to get, you know, more sets of eyes on this, because there are so many unknowns in this year's budget. With that, I think I've covered all of my, all the highlights of our budget and hopefully pointed out to you some things that, you know, you could consider and that we need to look at as a city down the road. And I'll take your questions now, and Matt again, as well.
No, thank you, Neil. I appreciate that. Could you, one second. Thank you, Neil. I appreciate that. Chairwoman Waterfield, would you like to make some comments before we take?
Two, two brief comments. The first one is, I had a tenure previously on the Board of Education for six years. I don't recall any time in my memory that we have flat-funded a budget before, and that certainly didn't come easy. It definitely happened because of the hard work of the Superintendent and his staff and all of the teachers and staff that have made multiple concessions in their wages and benefits over the past couple of years. And I just wanted to make sure, to acknowledge those sacrifices and that hard work. We are all in this together to get the city back on a stable financial footing. And I wanted to make sure that you all knew and that our staff and Superintendent know how much I personally appreciate all of that hard work and all those concessions. And the second thing I wanted to add was how proud I am of our teachers and staff, from the Superintendent on down to the hourly workers, who have all made this transition in this very stressful time, so much easier for our parents. I know we have a couple of council people who are, have either current students in school or recently have had students in school, and how hard it is on them to have gone through this process. But I have to say, speaking to friends in other towns, how smoother our situation has been and how successful we've been so far. We've certainly had a couple of bumps in the road, but they have been immediately and quickly addressed. And if they have not, certainly it was not for lack of trying, or perhaps we are unaware of it. I just, the students, the parents and staff have gone above and beyond over the past couple of weeks to get our students taken care of, not just academically, but I also feel emotionally supported. I have seen so many videos of our teachers reaching out to their kids. I saw a fabulous one today from the high school announcing the valedictorian and salutatorian with a parade and balloon delivery to each of their homes. I don't know if you follow Dana on Facebook, but if you don't, you should, because she posted them today. They were fabulous. I'm just so proud of all of them and how hard it has worked to make our students feel supported and loved and taught and cared for. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'm going to open it up to the Council to ask any questions. Again, I do ask that you raise your hand, you wait to be recognized, and you limit your questions to two at a time until... Has had an opportunity. Who would like to start? I'm going to go with Councilwoman Johnston. She's the liaison to the Board of Ed. And then, well, take it from there. Councilwoman?
Hi, thank you both so much for your time tonight. It's really helpful to be able to ask some questions. I am not a budget person by any stretch of the imagination, so some of this is overwhelming to me. I want to echo what Kebby was saying. I'm, I just think that you guys have done an amazing job. You know, I'm an educator in New Haven. I know how hard distance learning is. I know that teachers didn't get any training. You know, there was no time for anyone to plan for this. So I've heard, you know, positive things about the way that was rolled out. And then just seeing what, you know, a bunch of the initiatives to communicate with families, it's heartwarming. So I just want to say thank you for that. I have, since I'm limited to two questions, I just have, I want to start with my two clarifying questions first, and then I have some more probing questions. So the first one is just a definition thing. Can you just explain to me what, if you're looking at the pie chart where the budget is broken down, can you explain to me what purchased services are and what the tuition is? I mean, I assume from later pages that the tuition was maybe special education outplacement, but I'm not positive about that.
Start with the second part first. Yes, special education tuition, you're correct. The tuition is for special education students being placed out. There are also kids who attend magnet schools in New Haven. If they do receive any services, we get billed for New Haven, from New Haven regarding the services. We also have kids placed in other districts as well for a variety of reasons. For example, if DCF places a child in Milford, the Nexus, the last known permanent address of the parents is West Haven, we would be responsible for kids like that as well. With regards to purchase services, Matt, I believe those are, I would, did you guys get a copy of our budget book? We tried to explain that. If you didn't, we'll go to get you some. The purchase services are like, are goods such as?
There are, there are contracts with different vendors, such as our IT group, our legal firm. We have a hearing officer that does our residency hearings and expulsions and a bookkeeper at West Haven High School for the student activity.
Okay. Thank you. My second question was, and I don't know who has the book in front of them, and I, I'm just trying to understand the difference between the items E06 and G20. They both have to do with, you know, dues, conferences, professional development for teachers. But I'm just trying to understand the difference between the two.
E06, what was the other one?
G20.
I believe.
So, so G20 is more of the professional development that would hire a district. So a big expense out of that line item would be contracting Aces, that they have people come in and train us on different areas. The E06 line item is more individual-type dues and training. So as the business manager, I'm a member of a group called CASBO, has the entire state, all the state business managers for each school district, so that pays for that. Neil's Superintendent, it caps. So it's more individual-type conferences or dues for organizations that the district belongs to.
A lot of our professional development is not included in this budget. It also comes through our title funds and some other grants.
Title on the Alliance Grant pays for a lot of our professional development as well.
So Aces, does your PD, do your consultants also come from Aces?
Yes, in many cases, they do come. They'll spend the day at, for example, West Haven High School, or they'll spend the day at one of the schools. We do a lot in the area of mathematics. We've done language arts and the training, training our teachers, but training them on-site while they're in classroom.
Thank you. I have other questions, but I'll wait for later.
By the way, you can always, it can always come, or we're happy to, you know, we put this offer before. Any council member who wants to spend the day just going through the book or a couple of hours, we're more than happy to do that, because I know it's a difficult forum to get everything you want to get in. And it is a learning process.
One of the things that I think Councilwoman Johnston did is that while Neil was speaking, she muted herself, which I think is helping with that backfeed, at least for me. So that may be something that we all want to incorporate, instead of leaving like both of the lines open, is that if one person, you know, while you're asking the question, and they're answering, mute yourself again, because that was so clear to me. So I'm thinking that that might be beneficial. Is there somebody else that might have questions for Councilman Cohen?
Thank you. And just to reiterate what everyone else has said, I just really want to thank you, Kebby, and you, Neil, for all of your efforts and your staff's efforts and the rest of the Board of Education. It's been a tough year for many, many people. You know, with that said, just a really quick story. I was walking my dog, and I got a call when I came home from one of my neighbors who has a kid, and they knew it was the last night of Passover, and the child wanted to know if I had matzah in the house, if I was able to come to the store to get matzah. And they were just concerned. It just goes to show you how sweet the kids are in our school system. So again, Happy Passover to all of our children in the district.
Let's, not to interrupt you, but I can't say enough about those types of stories that you're hearing with this distance learning program. It's been amazing, although my, I'll tell you, I mean, I do have a fear that's going to get old as the days get longer and warmer pretty quick, especially with our high school kids.
Well, anyway, and also, Neil, what you just said, you took me under your wing when I was looking at the first Board of Ed contract, when I was new to the Council, and you spent a good hour on the phone with me to kind of explain everything. And so I appreciate that, your mentoring. In terms of my two questions, I just need a clarification. In the background information you gave us on Slide 14, we talk about special...
In the background information you gave us on slide 14, we talk about special, special education. And I was just trying to match up, I know that one of the larger expenses happens to be the transportation. And I, and there's many different, there's BO4, BO6, all the way through B16. Is most of the special education for transportation, is it, is it the handicapped and the VOTech? Can you give me some idea in terms of, is it just a mix of everything, of all those lines? Or is there one line that's more, because I noticed there was a 35% increase in spending for the handicap, which may or may not be special education. So I'm trying to feel for that.
Yep. So, so BO4 is the public school for all our schools within districts for, for all our kids. BO6 is our non-publics, that's St. Lawrence and Notre Dame, the transportation for them. BO8 is our transportation that we're required to transport kids from the district that go to Sound School and Lyman Hall. B10 is the same.
Plattech is BA.
I'm sorry, Plattech is BO8. Lyman Hall is B10. B12 is all our special ed transportation. And B16 are the, our student activities such as sports and different clubs that require transportation. One thing about, about B12 and, and how the, the expense kind of fluctuates from year to year, that contract is bid yearly. And it's bid due to the number of kids that we need to transport, the severity of their need, and quite frankly, which, we're subject to which companies want to transport these, these types of, of students. We are starting to see that, that line item for expense come down. Aces has developed a, a regional transportation model that, that takes neighboring towns that have kids going to the same school and, and has found a way to control cost and lower costs. And we have been taking advantage of that, and we will, we will grow with Aces as much as they grow.
Yeah. And to that point, thank you, because I saw that, you know, that that line went up a half a million, about a half a million, not quite, $475,000 thereabouts, if I'm doing my math correctly. And so that could, that could be less, but I know that's the budget right now, but with Aces, you may be able to fray that. I'm sorry.
Barry, you bring up a great point. It could be less, but it could be more. Unfortunately, what happens, or fortunately, during the course of the school year, you know, if a child moves, a family moves into West Haven, who may have a student already placed out, you know, we, we assume the bill. Now, kids come in, kids move out, but you know, it's something that we watch and track and trend very carefully throughout the course of the year because, you know, even one, you know, even the, the budgeted amount could, could go over under. And there are some reimbursements that we receive for, for special ed. It's called the excess, excess cost sharing that we, you know, for, for kids who might cost $200,000 in the course of a year, over $50,000 is the formula that the state reimburses us. But, but again, that could, it's come down a little bit, the percentage we receive, but it is something that, that could affect our budget radically in its circumstances beyond our control.
So, I mean, but, but to that point, and then I'll move on with my second question, is nobody has a crystal ball, obviously, but, and you had a basically, and the bids came in higher than past years, obviously, because that, you know, than you've had in the past. But when you get into the school year, if you get into like after the first or second marking period, will you have a better feel about that budget being higher or lower? Or you really don't know because things kind of go throughout the year a certain way?
It's, it, line item is very, very volatile. It's not, it's not just kids moving into the district or, or kids needing to be outplaced. It's kids that, you know, that are, that are difficult, that are very needy, that, that a company will bid a certain dollar amount and it will be difficult for, for them to transport the child safely. So there needs to be, they may need to add an aid. They may need to add other interventions to get, get the child safely to, to the, to the, to the school. So, you know, it's kind of always a moving target. We try to do our best to, to anticipate the costs. Again, I think the Aces Regional Transportation has really helped us because we're pooling their resources, we're pooling all the town's resources that are involved in it, and it's something we look forward to continuing.
Barry, can I also add too, that again, this is a year that, you know, we are not transporting students right now, you know, for, for various, for, because we're closed. However, you know, there is an expectation in one of the governor's executive orders that we are to pay and renegotiate with our transportation, people, people who provide us with transportation. So far, again, we believe there's going to be a savings, but it may not be the amount that, you know, on the surface, if we've got a million dollar contract, we're not going to just save a half a million dollars because we closed down. The people are going to get paid, but I think it's important to bring out.
Yeah, no, I respect that. And I, I have not asked my second question, but I think I ran over. So Madam Chair, I'll come back with my second question and my apologies, but it was so important.
Barry, you can ask. Thank you.
Okay. My second question, thank you very much. I wasn't sure else was in line, that's all. Thank you. My other question is really on D16, heat core buildings. I saw that that was very nice. It went down 35.14%. It went down from 664K to 431K. Is that due to the, the, the solar or the new initiatives, the new energy saving initiatives? I was very happy to see such a decrease in heating, in heating costs. So I'm just curious how we did that.
Yeah, there's, there's been a lot of energy efficient projects that we've taken advantage of, being an Alliance District. A few years ago, the governor released two rounds of over a million dollars for basically, basically projects like that for us to take advantage of. One of the main projects that we did was the pool house at West Haven. We also replaced some boilers. So we're just getting more energy efficient, more consistent controls throughout the district. And also the, the weather has been getting warmer quicker. So the need for heating our building has, has, has been less.
Are any of the rates that, I'm asking a question, Barry, Matt, are any of the rates that the city negotiated and locked in factor into that too? We've got some pretty good rates.
UI.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just happy to see that because you really brought down the cost, maybe because of repairs of equipment, et cetera, and everything you just said, the grant, you brought it back down to less than 2016 levels, year 2016, as I understand it. So that's all I had, and thank you for both clarifications. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Do we have any other questions? Councilwoman Finelli?
Just kind of a clarification question. I have the mayor's budget for me and also the Board of Ed requested budget. On the mayor's budget, it says, she's recommending the 89 million that we had last year, but the Board of Ed requested 91, which, that's including the Alliance Grant, right?
Correct.
Six million.
That, that includes the 1.6 additional, but again, the, the mayor's is, is right, that's the right number, yes.
Okay. So, so really then, what, what the Board of Ed is asking from what the city's portion would be, is that 44 million, like, we had this current year?
Well, the 44 million is the city's portion. You know, one of the things, the, the nice things about West Haven is you get a $90 million education for about half of that amount because, we can, because of whatever formula and high need being the major factor, we get over 50% of our budget back in the form of, from the state of Connecticut and ECS. They, they actually fund more than half the city's budget.
So just to clarify, is the mayor proposing 6 million less than that 44?
The, the 1.6 million comes directly to us. So, so the way the Alliance Grant works is, a few years back, the state decided to group the Alliance Grant and the ECS Grant together. So the, the base allotment of the ECS Grant is, is 41 million. But when they decided to combine the grants, the, the state share was 45 million. So what happens is you get the 41, the Alliance Grant makes up the differential of the four, and anything on top of that comes directly to the Board of Ed.
And by the way, you have to, as you know, Crystal, you have to put a plan in place, and that plan has to be approved, and it's pretty closely monitored by the State Department of Ed.
So I'm just wondering, is the mayor proposing then to, for us or for the Board of Ed, to keep the budget at 89 million and to give us 1.4, to give the Board of Ed 1.6 million less than the
Point, no, 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 no. The mayor's proposing get, the city funds it the same amount next year as they are funding it this year.
Okay.
The expectation that 1.6 million dollars will be coming directly to the board in the result of the Alliance Grant.
Okay. So essentially then, the budget, the number that you're requesting is the same as what the mayor's proposing to give?
Correct. Yes, yes.
Because it, it looks, I don't know if anybody has this in front of them, like it, it looks like the Board of Ed's requesting 91 and the mayor only wants to give 89, but when you subtract that Alliance Grant, it comes out to the same number.
Yes.
Okay. So it's really, it's not any, it looks like it's an increase if you didn't, you know, realize it. And then my second question.
We proposed 91 because, because we thought it was important to show our Board of Ed, the mayor and the council what we were planning to do with that additional 1.6 million dollars from the state.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I assumed. And then my second question is, just when I was going through the, the salaries, I noticed there was a $50,000 increase in the coordinators. Is that the, is the communications director included with the coordinators? Is that why? Okay. What I thought too, but I just wanted to make sure.
By the way, that again, given the circumstances, it's sorely needed. I, I mean, I think that we certainly can justify that. It's something the Board has wanted for, for years.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal.
Do any other council members have any questions? Councilman Bruno?
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Mr. Cavallaro, on that communication director, is that something that needs to be a full-time position?
You know, we, we've actually had the position, and you know, we feel like, by the way, the person did a great job. They kept our, you know, website up. They were able to do social media. We were able to get out in front of a lot of issues. I, I believe it does need to be a full-time position. It's, we've tried it with students from UNH and interns, and we've had people, you know, piecemeal it together, but it's nice to have one central person that could be, you know, spokesperson or get a message out, especially in today's day and age with the social media and, you know, Twitter and all of those other kinds of things. We kind of feel it's important.
I didn't know if it was something that, you know, there would stiffen for a teacher to do it or a part-time position where it'd be no benefit, you know? That's why I was asking that question.
It's probably one of the top complaints that we get and the top concerns that we have is communication with parents. Either they're not getting things home, they may not have a stable phone number, you know, a lot of people only have a cell phone now and may change cell phone numbers. A lot of people, I don't know if this is a good thing or a bad thing, get their news and information mainly from social media. In the past, this has been managed by that person with a Facebook page, Instagram account. I think we had several different text programs that went out. I honestly think that it, managing the information going out from the school to parents is something that we constantly are trying to improve upon. Engaging parents is our number one or top five issue that I think we face in the district to engage the parents, not only in critical information that needs to go out, but good things that are happening around town. You know, it's, it's nice that our teachers are putting this on their own personal social media, but it's also a double edged sword for them because you might not necessarily want parents following, following you on your personal social media because it is your personal business. So I think having a dedicated person to oversee the website, the communications that go out from the district is really, really a critical thing that would bring a lot of bang for the buck.
I also think, let me add one more thing to it. You know, we, we did have an outstanding person. Kevi was actually on the board when, when the, when the person was hired. She had a background in journalism. She was, she was really sharp and she did a good job. And I think a lot of our people, staff and our entire community got spoiled. And, and prior to that, as far as I was concerned, the jury was out because I would have said, do we really need it? But again, given, given the way people receive news and, and texts and posts and websites and Facebook, I, I think it is essential, given that we're, you know, we're a $100 million a year operation, and I think $50,000 to communicate a message is kind of a small salary or price to pay for that.
Okay. Very much. And on my second question, I was wondering if you could help with C14 salary, million dollars, coordinator. Can you, I mean, million dollars, what that is, what, what their job is?
Sure. They are people who oversee mostly the development and implementation of curriculum and teachers in their area. For example, there's a language arts coordinator who oversees the reading and the, the English, also oversees social studies. By the way, all of our coordinators have more than one responsibility. We have a math coordinator full-time who oversees the development and implementation of the math program, also does professional development. We have, I'll give you a funny story. One of the first things that I did when I was superintendent was, we saw the, the, I saw the need, you know, science was really taking off and, you know, everything, all research says you learn everything through science. You can do math, you can do reading and writing and engage kids that way. So I felt it was important to put in a full-time science coordinator. And again, for those of you who are familiar with it, we have science labs, we developed that program. Our scores, by the way, in science are, for our, the school systems they compare us to are, are always at the top. Well, we put that person in, and because the person was born in Italy, we made her in charge and, and learned how to speak English here, we put her in charge of our English as a second language program. And, you know, over the years since that happened, I've been here 12 years, my guess is that job now takes more time and is actually, could be a full-time job on its own with our students. So all of our coordinators see, have dual responsibilities, but mostly a major subject area and then, then something else. But that's an example of where we probably could use another person, but the, the, the woman who does it is so on top of it, we don't need it. We also have a special ed team. Some of their salaries are paid for out of a grant, but our, our director and one of the assistant directors are paid for out of that budget. There are, are central office administrators.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Bruno. Any other questions from council members? Councilwoman McKee?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Before my question, I just wanted to share that even though this is a difficult time, I see a lot of neighborhood families in the community outside with their masks on. Parents are getting creative, they're doing hopscotch, they're interacting with one another, and I think that that's a really great thing to, to see, especially with what's taking place now. My question is, you might have shared this already, just for my clarity, the $50,000 grant from Yale University for laptops, has that already been implemented or is that something that we're looking forward to doing in the future?
Actually, it's a, it's a $50,000 check that they, they're writing to go buy computers. I'm expecting it. Our, our offices are actually closed this week. This is our April break, and what we did was we made everybody take a vacation week this week because we just felt that, you know, the, the more we can keep people apart and, you know, not, you know, not have people working together under, under the peak weeks would be a good thing. So it was actually secure, or actually I was told about it last Wednesday or Thursday. I was told the check would be in the mail. I'm anticipating it coming early next week. The issue is going to be, Councilwoman, is that supplies are in short, are in large demand. So we are now ordering our computers to implement one-on-one So we are now ordering our computers to implement one-on-one for next year and this will be part of that order. The issue is going to be, uh, this finding a company that could give us the supply and the numbers we need to get them in the hands of our kids, uh, quickly. And that's an issue that every school district probably in the country is facing right now.
Okay, so how, thank you for a clarification. So how can students access? I know that, you know, it's students are unable to take home laptops. Um, like, you know, for example, I had a constituent contact me and say that, uh, she has three students in West Haven schools and they're all sharing a laptop. Um, you know, all having work due the same day and she needs another electronic device, you know, you know, or they're unable to submit their work in on time. So this being, you know, a difficult time, how are students, how will they be able to access? Um, technol- like technological uses, you know, by laptop in the future if we were to ever experience something like this before?
Well, as I said, you know, it's a good question. As I said, um, we're going to be better prepared because there is a good chance that this is going to happen again next fall. Um, our teachers, uh, and our support staff, special ed, reading people, guidance counselors, social workers. The number one thing that my directive, when this social, uh, when this distance learning plan, uh, started was you make sure you reach out and and communicate with with every family. Find out what they have, what they don't have. If we can point them in the right director, right, right direction, we're doing that. You know, we've had, we've had staff members deliver packets of work to kids' house, pick them up, drop them off in the mailbox. People have come to the school, not the same as as technology. And by the way, you made another good point. Most people, I I think the the fallacy is that people have no technology. They have it. The problem is, as you said, the parent may be working from home. There's three kids in the school district. Uh, they're all at different schools and there's only one device. Um, to compensate for that, our teachers are required to be online four hours a day. Many of them are on at six. We've been flexible with, um, when work is due. Um, uh, we have, we have teachers that are actually taking attendance and we expect them to do so. And if a kid can't check in during that four hour window and they check in sometime that night, they're giving credit for it. So we understand that number one, we need to, we need to make sure we account for every child in the school district. Where are they? What are they doing? How are they learning? But the other key component of this distance learning program and why it's been so flat, uh, so successful is our teachers have been so flexible with with, um, you know, giving kids the benefit of the doubt and allowing to turn and work late or, you know, through via a a written packet. But it, um, you know, next year we'll be in a better position. By the way, a couple of other things I mentioned, if I haven't. Rotary Club is, uh, is is going to, uh, donate around fifty devices, uh, based on recommendations from, uh, some of the kids. And, um, our friends over at Notre Dame High School, the president actually, uh, who's somewhat involved in Rotary and and I have a son that goes there and very good people. Um, they actually, he actually wrote a letter to Amazon. Kev, you don't know this yet because I haven't secured a number. But, uh, this, this was just yesterday. Um, there's a possibility we may have, uh, enough Amazon Fire tablets for every child at Bailey Middle School. We wanted them for the younger kids, but again, they have no supply for them. So they said, we have kids thirteen and up. We said, we're getting them for the high school kids, so we might be able to provide every middle school kid. So, you know, we're doing the best we can.
Showing off.
Supply, but, uh, as soon as we get them, we're going to try to get them in the kids' hands.
I inadvertently muted myself and was saying, oh, now he's showing off and I think Kevy read my lip.
No, listen, I I listen, people have reached out to us. It's it's, you know, we're doing.
Don't be average, Neil. Don't be average. We don't.
No.
Have a little dazzle.
Huh? We're not too proud to beg either.
We're gonna get you a bedazzled sweatshirt that says not average. Okay, I'm sorry.
We've really got some good people in this, in in this city that are helping us out again, including Notre Dame, who I know is our big rival. But, you know, we've got a really good relationship with them.
As long as we beat them on the field, that's all.
I think it's important too with, you know, we're, you know, we are obviously worried about protecting the assets of the of the district by, you know, keeping a close, close lid on the, where the laptops are and what's going on. But also because I'm not sure that, like Neil said, these are leased devices, working in IT. Um, all of our devices, uh, serial numbers are tagged, so we know where all our devices are at at every given moment. Um, and I think going forward with the new devices that we're getting, that's part of the plan that Neil had talked about with me, is making sure that we have the serial numbers of who has what device, um, similar to what we used to do in the past with textbooks. You know, you'd have to sign out your textbook and I'm not sure that at this point in time we were ready for this to occur and to send devices home without having all the tracking, um, installed on them yet.
We've even looked at trying to offer, you know, similar to the way we do, um, you know, our kid can, if he chooses to take a a musical instrument, the parent through a third party leases a, uh, an instrument, uh, with with the option to buy. You know, we've, we've looked at all of those things and, you know, again, we'll be better prepared in the future. We, this, this is something like I've never seen in thirty four years, so. Anyway, it's a good question, though.
Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first of all, Neil, Matt and Kevy, thank you guys very much for, uh, doing this tonight and being with us. I hope everybody's, uh, healthy and happy and we'll get through this together. Uh, the only question I had, and I'm not sure Neil, if you guys can answer it or maybe the mayor, is F twenty six, the police and fire. You, you're requesting seventy five thousand. Um, and the mayor's recommendation is three hundred and sixty one thousand. Get some, just, I'm sure it's accurate. I just want to know the clarity. Help me in.
Yeah, it's a good question and it's even come up in our board. Matt explained that.
So, um, our budget is for seventy five thousand because that line item used to pay for the S R, the SRO, the Student Resource Officers. Um, we are now paying that that bill out of the Alliance Grant funds. Um, last year we were, uh, the state allowed us to to use about fifty percent of our funds for operations and we are now choosing to pay, uh, the SROs out of that that portion of the grant.
So that's what her budget is for the three sixty one to pay for that, correct?
The three sixty one is the real number. Seventy five is coming out of the.
Our, our operating budget.
Gotcha. All right.
By the way, uh, you know, uh, for those of you that aren't aware, Gary, we, uh, we have security guards. This is the first year. It was a, it was a priority of the board last year. We have a, at least one security guard in every one of our schools. Um, in addition to, um, a a resource officer who does almost like a patrol with our elementary schools. Uh, uh, one at, uh, Resource Officer Carrigan, two at Bailey and two at West Haven High School.
Yeah. Hey, listen, I I'm all for having the police and and security there, um, especially what happened, uh, in the previous years. Thank you very much for your, uh, I'm all set.
Does anyone else have any questions? Before, um, um, Councilman Cohen, I just want everyone else to get a chance before we do the roundtable. Chairman, did you, Chairman, do you want to go?
Yeah, thank you, Bridget. Um, hi Neil, hi, uh, Kevy.
Hi, Ron.
Listen, again, I want to thank you, um, and 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 your team for everything that you're doing. Again, I think six months ago, this couldn't even been a wild dream in anybody's mind and yet, uh, you put a plan together and executed the plan and from what I've heard, it's it's, uh, it's going really well. So so congratulations, uh, to to all of you and your team. The 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 only comment I have or the question I have is, is, um, this time's got to be difficult for a lot. It's difficult for all of us, but, you know, especially our 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 young people. So have you, have you seen an uptick in in mental health needs and what are we doing? Um, for kind of like long distance assistance with that?
Well, uh, yeah, Ron, it's a good question. I don't think we've been out long enough for to see a a real, um, to to do any, um, definite, uh, diagnosis, so to speak. Uh, I think as this goes on, it's going to be an issue. It's something that, um, for those of you that don't know, Dr. Drazlowski, the Assistant Superintendent, who, uh, who was, you know, as far as curriculum goes and in in staying up on the trends and, you know, is a big part of pushing the coordinators to put the plan in place. Um, likes to say we built the plan, built the plane while we were flying it. Uh, but all of our, all of our professional staff, which includes social workers, guidance counselors, psychologists, uh, special ed support teachers are all on duty from from nine to one every day. Uh, and and the purpose, uh, for those guys is to make sure they're communicating and staying in touch with kids on caseloads. Um, reaching out to families. Again, I can share stories with you about how, you know, in spite of the the virus, they're, they're, they're dropping things off at people's homes and whatnot. So they're really doing a good job of, by the way, our EL staff as well, too, a a a huge part of of communicating with many families in our school district. Um, have gone out of their way to stay in touch with kids. However, um, I believe, um, I hope I'm wrong, that the longer this goes on, the more difficult it's going to be. And, you know, we're going to have to make sure that we're on top of it and that we are planning transition plans and seeing what maybe we can offer for kids in the summertime. Uh, in fact, uh, families who are concerned, for example, about, um, you know, my, my son is, uh, leaving the elementary school and going over to Carrigan next year or going from Carrigan to Bailey. They left their books in school and so there are, there are a lot of things and that 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 are going to happen between now and September, whether we physically come back to school or not. But those are things that we are, we are in the process of planning for. Obviously not to mention even, you know, our our high school kids who's, you know, my heart breaks for that, you know, the 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 short end of the, you talk about, you know, the short end of the stick. I mean, you get one chance to be a senior in high school. Uh, I use the example, everybody knows I'm I'm a hockey fan. Our kids woke up on Tuesday, thought they were going to go to Greenwich to play a state tournament game. And we were then going to host West Haven and Notre Dame at the Bennett Rink and make a lot of money. Uh, it was canceled that morning and, and, you know, kids who put and families who put twelve years of of travel hockey and planning and all their dreams were just told, your, your, your career is over. So those are all things that we are, we are working on, uh, and know we need to address. You know, how do we, right, on the right way?
That made me decide that we actually won the state hockey championship on both girls and boys, just so you know. We're now the winners.
You know, it's funny, my son said to me, said, Dad, nobody wins. I said, I look at it that nobody loses, you know?
Hey, Neil, one last question. Um, I just want to get your take. I know that you submitted a letter to us regarding, uh, the library and its potential, uh, relocation at some point to, uh, the Blake Building. So what, you know, I'd imagine that, you know, the partnership because of the proximity to Carrigan and things like that. But I mean, I just kind of want to get your quick thoughts as to, as to what collaboration you think, um, could be done with the library that was in that location.
Well, Ron, my understanding is that's a, that's a, a business that's going to set up a library. That's not the public library. Am I correct? Uh, uh, is that what you're, you're asking or you're asking?
No, it would be.
Public library.
It would be the public library that moves over to, um, to the Blake Building and 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 some time to be determined.
Ron, that i- i- it's a good question, but I think I would, uh, first of all, that's a great neighborhood. Remember, there's still a lot of single family homes that that it, but it's kind of separate and far away from a lot of other things in the city. So I think it would be a great location for kids in that neighborhood to gather after school and and study and maybe get online and be able to 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 hand in work via Google Classroom. But I I also think, and, you know, listen, there's, there's a lot of people on that library board whose families I know from when I grew up with and I know they're trying to to save their libraries and I I support that as an educator and we've worked really closely with Colleen. But I think there's a lot more potential with our, with our schools. For example, the Media Center at West Haven High School, which a lot of you have been with. I would love to find ways to expand the hours, um, so that kids can go back there after school at night and do their studying, similar to, you know, when you, when you go away to college and you need a place to go study. Um, and and I think there's the potential for that, even if a high school kid lives in the Savin Rock School District, for example, should have access to a computer lab there. Uh, and I would love to be able to work with the library, you know, which potentially could save, you know, again, I know that they're they're in need of funds and their money, but I, I think there's ways to maximize our school buildings for the purpose of of giving kids and families access to mostly technology now. It's not, you know, the old libraries that, you know, you go take, sign your book out kind of thing. But I think, I think there's a lot of potential for that and, uh, and and again, I think with the facilities that we have now at West Haven High School and even some of the work that we've done in our current buildings and and potentially Washington, uh, Elementary School, if we do a new one, which will be centered around the Media Center. There's a lot of opportunities to work together and just keep the buildings open, which is is something that I've, I've always been a proponent for, or it's the gymnasiums or the libraries.
I think that's a great suggestion and a wonderful opportunity for collaboration. Thanks, Neil. I'm all set, uh, Chairwoman.
Okay, um, Councilman Cohen, did you want to go before?
Yeah, just, thank you. I just had two clarifications, um, for Councilwoman, um, McGee and Neil. Um, we can tell you most definitely the check for fifty thousand dollars is in the mail. Um, long story short, the way that those computers were acquired was, um, as some of you may remember, um, a couple of weeks ago, Yale University launched their Fund for New Haven. And, um, long story short is I wrote to them and I wrote to the President of Yale saying, what about West Haven, asking to be part of that fund? Um, I had a couple of conversations with the Vice President of Yale Affairs. And currently I reached out to, um, Representative Bora and the rest of our legislators and, um, Representative Bora has a liaison that she talked to. We worked it together and at the end of the day, we had found out last week, that indeed we are getting, you know, we we could be part of the Fund for Yale because it was already put together. Um, some of you know Yale West is in my district, so I was very concerned that we weren't included in that fund. And, um, given a number of other things and, um, and conversations, they came back with, this is what they would give us and we felt it was great because it really met our educational mission. And so that check is definitely in the, in the mail and, um, I am thrilled and I thank, and I thank Representative Bora for really taking, taking the ball because, um, um, she's tired of hearing from me and I'm tired of hearing from her, so everything's good.
Um, listen, thank you, Barry. I didn't realize your, your involvement, but we we appreciate it. And we'll, again, we're going to do everything we can to get them in the hands of kids quickly.
Right. No, 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 no. What I want to say is I want you to know it's in the mail and, um, they have been, the relationship, um, just needs to be with Yale has to really be reinforced and sometimes because some of you may not realize this, Yale West has a totally separate administration from Yale University proper. And so when they came out with the Yale, the the Fund for Yale, the Fund for New Haven, I was interested in the economic side of it for our district, the small businesses, and that had already left. And so, um, I I happen to know a couple of people at Yale, senior management. Long story short is, um, I'm only a lowly councilperson, but thank God for Dorinda Bora because she took the ball and ran and the two of us just, um, she, it's all, it's mostly her credit, but what I'm saying is the good news is, is the next time there's an economic opportunity, grant or whatever, my feeling is, is that West Haven will be remembered by New Haven proper, which is so important. And most importantly, we got fifty thousand dollars for the kids. Um, the other comment that I had, um, having my own communications company and being in the business for like over three decades, um, I know that we talked about the fifty thousand dollars for the Communications Director. And my only suggestion, Neil, um, to the board and to you, you just, the way the job was described just now, it seemed like a digital manager, very heavy on website and very heavy on on social media. But, um, I I would encourage you guys to broaden that job description, really make a strategic communications because this person should also be organizing your content for continuity of a program message. Should it be a particular program for, for special needs or whatever that you have? Um, because it, you know, it it it's, it's a great opportunity for you. I can also address that. The fifty thousand dollars, again, with the benefits and all, you know, it's, it is a full-time position. Yes, there is an argument that you could hire, if you hire it out, but because of the depth and breadth of what I believe the Board of Education needs, in this particular instance, I I do support that being, being a coordinator position or whatever rank that is. But that's really it. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. I, I should show you some of the like annual reports and things that were done in the past. I think you'd, you'd be impressed and that's, and, and the former job, I'll, I'll try to get you a job description. Do you have one? Yeah, we'll get it to you. Maybe you want to look at it before we put it out, would be very helpful, actually, thank you.
Thank you, be interested.
Okay, so I have questions. My turn. Um, I am really glad about the, just to make a comment, I am really glad about the communication specialist or whatever the title will end up being, because just through the evolution of communication, I mean, it's just, it is the way in which the world is working. If you, if you don't read it on social media, it hasn't happened. So I think that's really great. One of the things I know from a few months ago, Neil, you guys were analyzing all of the roofs for the city schools. Did that ever happen? Like, did you, not, I'm only saying, because I know the pandemic and I didn't know the timeframe, but I know from Ken Carney, he said they were all going to be analyzed to get a final who's, what school's good and what school needs a new roof, did I?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in the process now, Bridgette. But again, we, the high school, we don't have to worry about, we, Carrigan, we're doing Bailey. I can tell you, hopefully we'll do Washington, so I won't have to do the whole school, we don't have to do a roof. But I can tell you that every other roof in the school district is, is out of warranty right now. And, and that is an issue. But it is the, the stu-, the actual study as to the need and to which schools would be addressed first is being done now.
Okay. Um, so that's good. And I also want to say that I also am really very excited about, you know, the solar panels and the efficient energy process that you guys are undertaking. Cause I know when I first started with it on the city council, it's been something that I was trying to hammer, hammer away at, because I, I just thought that it was such a huge opportunity, you know, put a solar panel, panel on every school, every farm, like, you know, you, you can have it on poles in the city. I mean, they can just be anywhere, they could be up on Kent Strong Stadium. You can, you know, there's different ways to do things that you can, how you can turn the lights on for the most part. So I'm really excited that, you know, that you have really taken such a active role in it. I mean, it, it can really just save money and especially like you're saying, you're going to be, be negotiating the teacher salaries. So wherever we can save money or get money, because even when the schools are closed, and I think that's what people don't understand, is that when the schools are closed and you're not using that energy, you're going to sell all of that back. They're going to.
Good point, great point, yep.
And that's the biggest thing for like, oh, well, you know, what can you really save? It's not always about what you save, it's what you can sell back. But I think that's really great. One of the things I, those were all my comments, but the second question I had, you was talking about an IT group. And I know that some of the questions, as, do you have an IT group or is it outsourced?
It is outsourced, but they, they give us full-time staff. And in fact, the staff was expanded last year when we added the one-on-one computer devices because obviously, you know, things are going to break, things to get fixed right away. They offer us a help desk, they help us manage our, our, our IT budget. They go out and do our E-rates. They are the provider, by the way, and because we have one IT group, they, they are the group and it was approved by the Department of Administrative Services at the state to be the IT group that would manage and install all of the technology at the new high school. Great bang for the buck, in my opinion, you know, because we just couldn't keep up with the changes in technology. I think when technology started in school 25, 30 years ago, it was teachers who were, had a knack for things. For, you know, I believe that we get a, a really good value for outsourcing the, the IT. And, and again, we get a team approach and like, although, so this year, when we do our, our statewide testing, they actually give us extra personnel because of the need, able to, you know, troubleshoot right away and make sure we can, you know, higher grade level or class or school online at a particular time. So they've done a really good job for us.
Because as far as you, when we were talking about outsourcing, are there other services that you, because you had mentioned it earlier, you know, you, you have the IT where, you know, we're doing the payroll now. Are there other services that you could imagine, especially maybe joining forces with the city? That if we did mutually, that we could save money on, similarly to payroll?
I think the short answer is yes. For example, we do, right now, we, but again, it was, it took a long time and a lot of negotiations. But for example, our main, uh, uh, union at the Board of Ed, which includes clerical people, tradesmen and whatnot. Over time, we've been able to bring in part-time cleaners that are non-union members that come in and work three hours a day. They, you know, they do all the jobs that nobody wants to do, they clean the toilets, they, they did the door handles when we were, you know, when we first started dealing with the virus and things like that. They come in, they, they oversee the stadium, the pool. We do have one full-time employee that we, we employ down at the complex, but everybody else is part-time. You know, I think those are all opportunities where the city could benefit from, you know. But again, it, 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 things like that don't happen overnight. You're going to have to go to your AFSCM union and, you know, work out some kind of a, a, an agreement. But yeah, I mean, like our service, I, I think the more people you would apply from them, the better rate we get, for example.
Because that's kind of, you know, what I, I look at. I look at, you know, the, the, like you said, the maintenance workers are the custodians, you know, in your, in that clean up your schools, we have custodians that clean up our city building. Why, why are they separate? You know, if we were to all come together and have that one big pool, you, you know, you would get more money. I think of the same, same thing as Chris Evron does an amazing job over at the high school and with, um, your. Huh? Did I say?
Everybody loves Chris.
Um, what, his work is great, everything, his personality, no joking, I, I do love him. He, he's amazing. But I'm just wondering that, you know, how do we become one? And, you know, with this payroll or not, you know, not even, you know, are there other services that we should be outsourcing that would be beneficial to not only the Board of Ed, but to the city, save us money? And then we can really pay our teachers what they deserve. Uh, because it is a thankless job. Um, you sit there and you thank them and, you know, they spend as much time with your kids as you do. And sometimes, you know, I used to tell my sons all the time that teachers were the closest thing to gods besides me and their father. So act right when you went to school, but sometimes they didn't. Um, and, you know, we don't necessarily, we don't pay them what surrounding towns do or, you know, we don't pay them their worth. So I'm just trying to think of ways to where we can, or drop little thoughts on how we can save money and be able to redirect it for other, for other line items that you have.
Listen, I'll, I'll tell you, I'll tell you a, a, a story, which I, you know, I, to this day, I, it was one of my first years as, as superintendent and we were losing a ton of money a year down at the rink. And so Ken Carney and I, and actually some other people were investigating, how do, how do we turn this around? So we went and talked to a couple of people over at, you know, people who operate rinks. You know, by the way, we're the only Board of Education in the state of Connecticut that, that operates a rink. Most are privately owned. And it's actually the guy, he owned the, the Milford Rink at the time, he owns, he owns the Norfolk skating rink now, Marty Russo, legendary hockey coach. We sat down with him and his accountant and the accountant said to me, we were talking, gee, should we do it? Should we not do it? And here's what he said, he said, he talked, he, he told the story of the, the Jack, the former head of GE, I can't think of his name right now, just passed away. Jack Welsh, just passed away, thanks Matt. And what Jack Welsh always said was, what are you, what do you do? What, what is your core mission? Our core mission is education. Okay, concentrate and spend your time on educating and let everybody else do everything else. So, you know, I believe in outsourcing for things that Boards of Education shouldn't get involved with. Same with the city, we don't typically do a good job of managing things to, to run profits. You know, the issues are, is that we've got some really good workers here. We have the Chris Evrons of the world and a lot of good maintenance guys. And most of them are in closed shop bargaining units. And you just can't, you just can't say, you know, we're no longer going to employ you or we're going to redeploy you or other things. As I said before, they take, it takes a long time to negotiate and you've got to kind of build up a trust. And I, and I do feel like that's one of the things that I have with, with our bargaining units is, you know, while we fight with them, we, we, there's also a trust and there's a, you know, Neil's got our back feeling. I think they, they all know that. So, so the short answer is yes, there are, there are things we should look at that we don't do very well, that we should outsource. However, you've got to do it in a way that protects your current workforce, all of whom have put in a lot of years. Now, as far as the city goes, I can tell you that Chris has an excellent working relationship with Tom McCarthy and the supervisors for the park department. You know, if we need to line a field, we'll line the field. If Chris needs to get some asphalt to do some patches, you know, Tom helps us out right away. So there's a very good working relationship between, between the two groups. What I would tell you is, is that, you know, we, over time, you know, and I think that, you know, I don't want to say it the wrong way, because I understand where we are financially. But in many ways, we were penny wise and pound foolish, because somebody quits, you don't fill the job. Somebody quits, you don't fill the job. And then somebody starts a new league or, or you build a field and you've got to maintain those fields. And you don't have the manpower, whether you combine your efforts or not, to fix what you have. So, so I do think that, you know, we need to look at those kinds of, kinds of things and say, what can we do? What could somebody else from the outside do better? And we can combine services, but, you know, right now, I don't think the city or the Board of Ed is in a position to say, look, we'll take this and, you know, be able to, to maintain it to the level we need to maintain it. We did work out something last year, which worked out pretty well. If you notice the area around the tennis courts, uh, which is the entrance of the high school. The, the, the crazy thing was that the city was maintaining the tennis courts. And, you know, we maintained the high school field. So we said, look, let us do it. I think we're doing a better job and the city took on something else for us. I still want to get rid of that dog run down there. And I know there's a lot of dog lovers, but I don't think it belongs there, a tennis court. I still think that those courts need to be replaced because that's going to be the new entrance to my high school and that's your first impression. They're just old fences need to be replaced. There's a lot of capital things that need to happen too, that we would have to contract out for anyway. But we do have a, a, I think, a, a really good working relationship with the city. I think it's due to Chris, I think it's due to Tom McCarthy. Mike McGrath also knows everybody in town and, you know, he, he can reach out to people. You know, don't, you know, one of the things that you also, you know, it's been a while now, but we've outsourced our food service, which is in a, a really good thing for the city and the Board of Ed. We, we run a profit now in, in our food service department. And by the way, that profit by law has to be put back into the food service program. That food service program was able to purchase most of the, most of the equipment for the high school cafeteria to the tune of about $300,000 that we just couldn't spend, so why not spend it on that? You know, we're going to upgrade our cafeterias as a result of the money we're making with Bailey and Carrigan. We're, we're doing something similar at the rink now, where we, again, negotiated the not, the union guys out. We just couldn't afford them there. With the, with the amount of ice we can rent and whatnot and the, the price we were paying. So, you know, we've been able to turn that deficit into a little bit of a profit and put all of the money back into the rink and the facility and even, even over at the stadium. So, yeah, the, the answer is there's, there's always ways to be more efficient. There's always things we should be looking at. But I think with the current workforce, we're going to have a hard time maintaining what we have.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Cavalero?
There we go, you can hear me? Okay, that's good. It's not so much of a question, I've been taking notes as Neil's been talking, but he is absolutely right. We, we have a great partnership, the city and the Board of Education. We're working on a lot of different things together, whether it be HR, payroll, the risk manager, and we're going to do our best to share positions, which will get the most bang for both of our bucks, if you will. And these initiatives, I think, are working out well. And we're looking to expand, we just want to complete, you know, the HR and payroll. We, we want to get all that done and in place. It has been a, a, a great partnership, because I hear, you know, when I go other places and it's almost like, you know, the city and the Board of Ed are enemies and don't work together. But I haven't found that since I've been in, we work well together and we're getting a lot accomplished. I too am very, very excited about Washington School, because a few months after I had gotten in, I asked the superintendent about the, is the reimbursement rate the same or did it go down? Or, and when I found that it was the same, and Washington was our oldest school and, and in such need of, you know, to be, to have a new school there, I was very happy to, you know, get that. And, and again, Neil and I, and, and Ken Carney was involved in it and we're, we're moving that along. And it's very, very exciting. I think we should continue to, you know, because again, when was the last time, other than the high school, we had a, a new school in the city of West Haven? And I think our children deserve it. Also want to talk about the computers. I want to thank Councilwoman Cohen. I did know about his involvement in this and also State Representative. I've talked to her about this. I too have been in contact with her, Logan Zucker has reached out to me. And I do believe the check is in the mail, Barry. So, and if it's not, I will, I will definitely make another call. I think it's, it's very, very exciting. Councilwoman McGee, if you could get for me though, the, the name or an address of the family you're talking about, because I'm also on the Rotary and we are, we have a GoFundMe page. So if anybody hasn't donated and would like to, it's on Facebook. And what we're doing is they are supplementing as well with Chromebooks and also food for families that have lost their jobs or waiting for unemployment or whatever the situation is. And if we get to $10,000, the Rotary station will match that 10. So the 10 turns into 20 and we can do a lot with $20,000. So again, if this family is suffering because, and what they're saying, if there's three, three students and they're all in different grades and there's one computer and the parent's working from home, it's going to be a very difficult task. So we're trying as well. But again, I can't say enough, I mean, and thank you Neil for all you do and Matt and the Board of Education. I mean, it, it has been difficult run. It's hard enough to me navigating these virtual meetings, let alone, you know, distant learning and getting it all set up and to do this once they had closed the school. So it's greatly appreciated by the city.
Um, really quick, I, I wanted to ask Neil about Washington School. The possibility of there being a new one. Could you give us a brief update? I am, you know, right across the street from it, but it is Councilwoman Johnston, it is her district. And I'm not sure if the rest of the council know too much about it, but if you can just give a quick little.
Sure. Yeah, you know, again, I think that's where, by the way, you know, I, I think it's a nice way to, to, to again, reiterate the, the need for really looking at a long-term plan for the city. Because, you know, you, you get to the point, and we did it with West Haven High School, we were putting in a million dollars or $2 million a year maintaining the buildings. And I think that's where we are with Washington, not to mention they're not efficient. Washington is not handicap accessible. It's a very difficult building to, to, to run wireless internet in. You know, we've got a. And, um, you know, we've got to place kids out who live in that district because they're not, because it's not accessible. But, uh, where we are is that we actually, um, hired an architect, um, as part of the, uh, committee that you were on, uh, Bridgette, um, to, to analyze and to look at the feasibility of building a new school. Our plan is to come before the Board, which, uh, the Board of Education will approve the educational specifications shortly, uh, probably during the month of May. Uh, and prior to the end of the legislative session, and the good news is I think that session is going to be extended because of the virus, um, the council will have to approve or commit to funding the project. And we will submit plans to the state of Connecticut. Uh, we believe we're going to make, based on what the architects and the meetings I've had and with Ken and, and with our, our administrative team, uh, there's a very good chance that we are going to get on what they call the priority list. We'll know that, uh, by next January or February and we should receive word by the end of the legislative session in 2021, that we've qualified for a full reimbursement on the project. So, and then anytime after that, um, you know, once the council bonds for its share of the project, we'll, which is down the road, I mean, they do the bid and I'm not exactly sure how that works, but, um, we, we'll start the project.
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate that. Any other questions? Any final comments? Well, I just want to wrap up and say I've, um, really not been enjoying the distance learning that much. My high schooler is. My needs are mental health. No. Um, it, it, I too have been, um, privy to this, um, you know, dealing with it every, um, day with my, my child in the high school. And, you know, we are lucky. We have, um, two laptops in our house. She always gets the better one. Um, but it has been remarkable and, and I can tell you that the teachers are very responsive and, um, the principal, um, Dana, she is amazing. I mean, she really is a jewel. So, um, I'm very, a lot of information is out there and, and I, I'm forever grateful. Um, I too feel bad for the seniors, you know, I do hope and I'm sure we're going to figure out something, you know, for them to celebrate in some way. But, um, if that is all, then I want to thank Neil, Matt, um, Kevi for attending this evening and we will see you soon.
Hey, thank you Bridgette. Thank you everyone. Have a good night.
For the city council.
So can I just make one quick, uh, comment before we, we recess for the evening? So you'll get in your email, if you haven't already, a change in the Finance Committee schedule. So next Wednesday, the 22nd, we will have a special meeting of the City Council at six o'clock, um, to review, um, discuss and take action on Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7S. That's for, um, potential tax deferment for the citizens or, and or a, um, uh, a reduced rate and interest for, for, for taxes if people are late. So we'll discuss that at a special meeting on the 22nd at six, and then we will move the Finance Committee meeting for seven o'clock that evening.
Thank you. So the time is now 7:35 and we will recess until 7:00 PM on Tuesday. Thank you so much, everybody. Stay safe and wash your hands.
Night.
What's going on mommy?